Marty, this is Chair Taveris. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. How are you? Can you hear me? Hello?
I can hear you, Marty.
Oh, okay. Tammy, I don't, I can hear you just fine. I'm not sure if you can still hear me.
Tammy, you're unmuted, but I'm not hearing you.
Marty, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me now?
Madam Chair, I can hear you. Can you hear us?
I'm talking to her right now over text.
Okay.
Okay, Marty, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Tammy. I don't know if Marty can hear you, but I can hear you. I hope you can hear me. I can't tell. Tammy, can you hear me?
Okay, Marty, I cannot hear you guys. It's my understanding that you can hear me. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna log out on, and see if it works, see if it works.
Okay, I'll wait for you to, I'll show up so I can admit you.
Tammy, can you hear us now?
Okay, yes, I can. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine. I think we're good to go.
Okay, let me get the participant list up. Let me just quickly look at the commissioners that are here. We don't need, Mr. Short, you're gonna be the one running, kind of facilitating the meeting tonight, correct?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, and we don't have to have, it's my understanding, we don't have to have a quorum for the study session. So if that is true, why don't you go ahead and start, please?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. All right, I'll go ahead and start with the cases on the study session agenda. The first case is ZC 21 009. This is a request for zone change from general zone to the RC Resort Commercial Zone to allow for continued operation of an existing development with nineteen cabins used for lodging and supporting uses on four parcels totaling eight point one acres. And this particular property is located at thirty-two ten North State Route eighty-nine A in Oak Creek. This is the Briar Patch Inn that has been there for quite some time. I'll go ahead and share my screen and pull up a, and I'll start with the aerial photo. Hopefully, everything will work okay. Can everyone see that aerial photo?
Yeah, it looks good.
Okay, good. So this is the Briar Cliff Inn. It's this, this parcel, this parcel and these two smaller parcels. And this has been there, I'll look at an aerial briefly, but it kind of, they kind of go away when you pull the aerial up. That looks a little bit better than it has been. All right. So it's these four parcels right here. It's an existing development. I don't know how long it's been there, but it's been there for quite some time. I'll do some research and find out exactly, but probably at least fifty years, maybe sixty years. Some of the commissioners may know more than I do about this. But it's existed as a legal nonconforming basically resort on these four parcels down in Oak Creek for a long time. It's had these nice little cabins down there, these kind of historic cabins. And it is on a general zone parcel. So they came in and they wanted to add some employee housing in the way of a manufactured home. They had some long-term employees. They wanted to support them. And we were discussing with them the best way to do this. And they can't really add more density into this general zone. So we suggested that they go ahead and get this turned to the zone, which it's believing operating as. So we, we suggested the resort commercial zone. So I'll go ahead and pull up a site plan and show you what they're, actually, this is existing development. Can everyone see the site plan?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, so this is the north part of the property. You can see, this is Highway eighty-nine A on this side. You can see the existing circulation through here. There's some parking spaces they've shown, and they have all these different cabins. They all have, you know, cute little names. They have their thirty-five percent open space required in the RC zone, actually thirty, thirty percent. And if you look on this side, you can see this is Oak Creek over here. So it's a really nice spot. And then let me show you the second half. This is the bottom half, the southern half of the project. And right here, they, this is their proposed double-eyed manufactured home they were gonna use for employee housing. So that's the main thing that they want to do. Otherwise, since this is this existing use, it's been here for a long, long time in way of a lighting plan and landscaping, mostly lighting and signage, we have just had them take pictures of what they have there now. You know, because it's been there a long time and we can, we can include those in the record for this case so that they can all be codified as part of the RC zone. In terms of landscaping, obviously, there's lots of landscaping down here in Oak Creek. So they, that should be well-covered. They've also, you know, pointed out areas where there's grass and where there's trees and where different things are. So with that, does the commission have any questions about this case?
Now, Bob, would we want to apply any of the campground conditions to this? And I don't know, just an open question. We've got about fifteen conditions. Do you have that list?
Yes, I don't have it in front of me right now, but it's.
Well, you might look it over and see if anything fits. I don't, I don't know how the activities of a place like this compared to a campground, honestly. But if any of those conditions seem to fit, you know, maybe education about how to protect the wilderness and leave no trace type of stuff is real cheap and easy to provide. You know, I assume these folks will be out and about in the, in the wilderness there, so.
I'd just like to make a, a comment on that. The last time these folks came to us for some action, it's been a few years, but I visited the property, spent a lot of time there, and I believe that was something that was in Zach's ballpark. But this is completely unlike what we look at as a campground now. It's developed and it probably goes back to the forties or fifties. It is a rather lush landscape, typical of what you see in Oak Creek Canyon for some of the older places like this. So there probably isn't much, but I think Sot's got a good suggestion that some of the conditions that we have asked for in the past be looked at relative to this. So that's my two cents worth.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles and Commissioner Best. I think that when you start thinking about that lush landscaping, you start thinking about a fire wise plan. So I think that's something that could be important.
One comment on that, too, tremendous amount of that is deciduous trees as opposed to pine forests like we have up here above the rim. So some consideration for that needs to be given also.
Right, you know, that makes sense. And there could be, within here, there could be some fire rings. There could be some different things that they do. I, I will look and make sure, but I, I imagine they're part of a fire district. If they aren't, they certainly should be. And possibly the fire chief should look at them, you know, they should have an emergency plan and a, and a fire plan for this. But we can look at all those things and make sure to, these are good times to update these, these particular developments and make sure that they are safe.
Yeah, just one other thing that might be worth mentioning, since I sat in on the, your previous agenda meeting. And that is the fact that Resort Commercial would take it out of the legal nonconforming class that it's in now.
Yeah, that is exactly correct, Commissioner Ruggles. We did look at the fact that if you look at the Oak Creek plan, it doesn't allow for new commercial, but this really isn't new commercial. This is very, very much existing commercial. It's been here for a long time. So I think it would be, it would be helpful to maybe bring up some of the standards of this place, just to make sure. I think it's a really nice place, thought really nice development. I'm pretty sure I attended a wedding here a long time ago. I'm not positive about that. I think it was in this grass area right here.
Your assessment is something that, when you mentioned that, that earlier, I really agreed with completely.
Bob, I, I'd like to mention that I visited that case we're looking at tonight, the Girl Scout camp on Stoneman Lake Road. And I was impressed. There's a lot of new Forest Service signage out there trying to educate people about trash and staying on the roads that are approved for off-road use. So I think the Forest Service is very interested and working hard on off-site impacts. And, and that's what I would suggest, looking at those conditions. What, how can we educate people effectively without putting too great a burden on the applicant to, to understand off-site impacts? Just some of the signage and things that, that we've got in those conditions might, might apply here.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best. I'll take, definitely take a look at that. Any other questions, comments from commissioners on this case?
I assume there is a, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jim.
Go ahead, Sot.
Well, just leach field and septic and all that, you've had an engineer look at that, or they will, or?
We haven't. That, I'm that's a, that's a good point. Definitely something we'll want to ask about and inquire about.
Yeah, because I know there are issues with contamination of Oak Creek sometimes. So we want to, this would be a good time to double check that they're up to date on that.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll look at what, what we can do, maybe talk with the, our legal department on what we can do in terms of having someone upgrade something like that with this kind of case. But I, I imagine this grass area might be, who knows, you know, there could be drain fields all through here. We don't really know. With that, that's a good, that's another good point. Definitely. I know that up the road at Butterfly Inn, they did, they did complete, it's a much more dense development, I believe, but they did completely redo their wastewater system up there.
You can see there, excuse me, you can see where it says approximate septic tank on the lower left-hand corner.
Yeah. Can zoom in, maybe everyone can see it a little better. Yeah, there's bathrooms, laundry, yep. I see that. There's one right there as well. So they have a couple of those on here. At least, I imagine many more.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely. If they're gonna add more, you know, units in their living units, that's a good time to review the whole subject system.
That's a good point as well. I'll have a discussion with our environmental quality supervisor who will have to approve this new double-wide on here and, and see what, what implications this zone changer have.
There is a fire station just down the street from here.
That's right.
I believe that whole area is annexed by Sedona Fire.
Thank you, Commissioner Clifford. I, I had, I assume there would be some kind of fire service through here. This is getting further down, a little closer to Sedona, I guess, but.
Yeah, even with that, Jim is absolutely right about that. Fire, fire station's just a little ways up the road from there. I remember when we did the, the last use permit for them.
Okay, any other questions, comments from commissioners on this case? Okay, Madam Chair, I will move on to the next one, if that's okay with you.
Yes, please do.
Right. Okay, the next case is case number DRO twenty-one. Actually, that should be a ten. We had two different, we had duplicate applications in our system. So that's twenty-one zero, zero, ten, one, one zero. A request for design review for an expansion of a fire station on one point four acre parcel in the CH ten thousand commercial heavy zone. The subject property is located at eleven nine fifty-one Shadow Mountain Drive in Belmont and is identified as assessors parcel two oh four oh seven zero four one A. And I think commissioners are probably familiar with this particular parcel. This is the fire station out at Belmont, our station eighty-two for ponderosa fire. You can see it here. It's now being surrounded by the Flagstaff Meadows subdivisions. And this is the existing fire station. You can see the outline of the fire station parking over here. This area right here, it looks like is about the right area for what they're gonna do for the, for the expansion of the fire station. And I'll go ahead and pull up that site plan to show you what that looks like. And I'm sorry, the site plan is really light. I'm not sure why exactly, but it's really light. Anyway, this, this is Shadow Mountain Drive out front. Getting back up a little bit here. This is Shadow Mountain Drive. We have two different entrances, of course. We have parking over here on this side. I think some more back in here. And the existing fire station is in this location, and this is the area for the expansion right here. There's some more parking along here as well. I think that might be proposed parking. And let me go ahead and pull up some elevations to show you what they're looking at. So this is an elevation to one side. I think you can get the idea with just this one side. So this is the front, how it would look. There's the sign for the fire station. And this is the side, and this is the existing fire station. You can see the bays over here for the fire trucks. So that's how it would look. Over here, you can see the material samples. The Belmont Area Plan Design Guidelines require it to, to be urton colors. So you can see this is an urton, and there's some accents in here that may be a little bit different color. But that should work with the, with the Belmont Area Plan. I did want to mention that one of the issues that came up, and this is an issue that we were starting to see out of Belmont a little bit. But the fire station, they do have a metal storage container back here. And we couldn't identify that it had a permit. So I am having them add the metal storage cadent container to this DRO since it wasn't approved before. I think they might have gotten some incorrect information, the county possibly. And that's what they said, that someone had told me they could, they could install that without a permit. So I'm having them add that and go ahead and, and paint that the same color as this building is. We also actually got a complaint from a neighbor about that metal storage container. So that was part of that. So I'm having them add that to the site plan. But with that, we do have landscaping, we do have lighting plan. The lighting, I didn't bring that up, but it's not, there's not a lot of lighting here. I think they only added a few lights. And those were only gonna be at the doorways. So there wasn't a whole lot of lighting added to this. And the signage was, of course, that sign you saw on the front right there. This sign right here. So that's their signage. With that, does the commission have any questions on this?
Oh, is this gonna be a meeting hall, or what's the function?
Yes, it is. It's going to have a meeting room with, they said thirty to fifty spaces are basically for thirty to fifty seats. So we, we have to make sure, as staff discussed in the earlier meeting, that they have enough parking. There's also like new offices for the fire chief and for some of the personnel. And I believe there's also some new, there's like new restrooms and new places for the, for the firefighters to stay.
Okay, my concern was parking. You got that covered. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Any other questions from the commission? Okay, with that, we'll move on. I'll stop sharing my screen. We'll move on to the next case. The next case is CUP twenty-one dash zero five one, a request for conditional use permit previously CUP oh six zero six zero for an expansion of a legal nonconforming use. Yeah, that's a commercial vehicle, industrial and construction equipment, sales and rental business on two point one four acre parcel in the AR Agricultural Residential Zone. The subject property is located at forty-nine hundred East Empire Avenue in Flagstaff. And I, it's, this, this parcel is actually located in a catany island, and it's the only, the only parcel in this county island. So if you've ever driven down Empire over north of the mall on highway, off of Highway eighty-nine, you would not know that, that that was part of the county. If there's any county land out there, but there is this one parcel left. And this belongs, this case is covered by Kelly Bingham, and she'll, Kelly, go ahead and tell us how this works.
Thank you, Bob. As was mentioned, this is a renewal of a previously expired conditional use permit. This parcel is used for vehicle and commercial vehicle storage and sales. This here is the shop. It also has its three employees. And additionally, this parcel has this parcel over here is connected to this use. This is owned by the city of Flagstaff. It is not county jurisdiction. So the use extends onto it. We're only considering this portion here. Are there any questions from the commission so far, or Mr. Short, have I missed anything?
Kelly, I've got something I can add that came up during your agenda session. I remember Zach saying he thought he visited the property just to the north of that. Just a little bit of historic data. Zach did visit it. I went with him. That used to be in the county. It was combined with the property that the gas station over on eighty-nine adjacent to it is on, and that was done in twenty twenty. Now, what used to be on that property to the north, because the question came up, was a storage yard, and it did have a CUP that they applied for. This was some years ago, but the property that Zach thought he had visited, he was correct. And it was combined with the property that the gas, the new gas station on eighty-nine is on in twenty twenty. So just for the record, so you know what you're looking at, that is no longer part of the county. Don't know exactly how that worked. They probably could have annexed that property when the gas station was laid out, and then they now have a parking lot retention basin on that next to Empire there.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. I really appreciate the history there, and that'll be really helpful as I continue my research. Are there any other questions from the commission? All right, Mr. Short, I'll hand it back to you for now.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Madam Chair, are you still with us?
I am.
Oh, good. You're able to hear. I'm happy you're still able to hear. All right, good. So we have one other administrative renewal case, and this is the Mounds Park RV Park. And we're, we're looking at this one. This one has some, some interesting things going on. We're trying to determine a couple of different things. So we're not sure how it will go in the end. It could come back to the commission. Or it may not require renewal at all, because it, it might have been, it might be an approved use now based on the update to our zoning ordinance. Any questions on that one? Okay, let's go ahead and move on then. Go ahead and go to the Community Development Department update. I believe Jake Crystalwin's here, and he can talk on some of these. Jay, if you don't mind, go ahead and look at number one and two. Recruiting for Assistant Director, Planning Manager, and also our current COVID policy at the county.
Yeah, thanks, Bob. Appreciate it. Good evening, commissioners. Stay here.
Yeah, thanks, Bob, appreciate it, uh, good evening, Commissioners, Jay here. Um, that's real quick, before we get onto the recruitment, I'll be brief, but uh, two weeks ago, um, I presented the RV parks, uh, well, the Parks RV Resort um, appeal to the board supervisors, they uh, denied the appeal and upheld the um, commission's decision to approve the CUP with very minor modification to require the drive that goes south of the Texaco there to be for emergency ingress egress only, uh, very simple. They got the density that they wanted, so it was essentially the same, the same approval that the, that the commission laid out. Uh, as far as recruit, or any questions on that before I go on to recruitment? Okay, great, thank you. Um, so recruiting for the assistant director, we had the position open for a month, I had a professional brochure created uh, to distribute with the uh material. Recruitment is extremely difficult right now, it's a nationwide phenomenon, I only received eight applications. Three met HR's minimum qualifications, none of them met my minimum qualification, so we modified the posting a little bit, and it's posting again this week, it may already have, I, I didn't check. But uh, for reference, the uh Parks and Recreation Director Cynthia Nemeth, she has been recruiting for uh well over a year for her assistant director, Jessica tells me that they just now, they just now are having interviews, so it's, she's had a real hard time trying to find a, a replacement as well, so uh, I really value this P and Z team for keeping things going so professionally while Jess is, uh, you know, he's gone. He did come camping with me all weekend a couple of weeks ago, a whole bunch of us, so I still see him all the time, he's doing great. Um, the COVID policy, I know that there's been a, a lot of discussion on when are we gonna open up to the uh public and have hybrid meetings, so the uh equipment still has not arrived, it was purchased, I think it's a couple of months ago now. Uh, but we still don't have the equipment to, to set up the room, so um, until, until we get that equipment and get it set up appropriately, I, I don't have an answer for you, but it is in the works. And other than that, uh, we do have Mark Stento, uh, who've been mentioned before, he is extremely um efficient with his code enforcement activities, and we're really starting to try to hammer the valley area a little bit, we got a big uh metallic decal for his truck that says code enforcement, you could see it a mile away, so that, you know, people know that we're starting to at least patrol the area. Those folks all talk out there, they're part of their own community, so we're uh, we're hoping to um get the word spread that, you know, we're gonna be looking at uh requiring permits and, and doing our due diligence in, you know, kind of targeting that area, so other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Christelman, this is Chair Aunt Taveras, uh, I I agree with you on the difficulty finding employees, it's not just a county-related phenomenon or a government employee-related phenomenon. Uh, the equipment, um, also just not related to audio, it's, it's getting tough out there. And I do agree that um, when the code enforcement starts showing up in valley, um, things things are going to be corrected that need to be corrected. Now, my question is, um, is the county, is the plan for the public hearings, is that going to be, they're not gonna have them until they actually get the equipment in to allow for hybrid meetings?
Uh, Madam Chair, that's my understanding. Just because if they, if they did have them in person without the hybrid uh, option, we would then be alienating, you know, eighteen months worth of folks that are used to participating in public hearings, the, the alternate way, so that's my understanding, right?
Okay, okay, so until that equipment gets here, and really, God knows when that's gonna happen, we won't be having public hearings.
Not in person, that's correct. Yeah, correct, and you know, with regards to the equipment, we set Zach and Bob's office up, we've done a lot. For those of you that have been in the building, we've done a ton of shuffling around, just because we lost half of our building space. And we're trying to maximize efficiency in our, what space we do have. Um, encouraging staff to come back to the office more frequently. And we were waiting for, we had all our laptops, we had all of our, our fancy monitors. Um, they're large format, so we can do plan review and markup on, on the screen, and there's this little box, I can't remember what it's called now, Bob, you might remember, or Zach, but there's, there's a little box that connects the laptop that allows for you to use dual monitors, and then a cable associated with that, it took three months just to get those things, I mean, it was, it's unbelievable.
Oh, oh, I believe it, I, I believe it, um, and it shortages on everything. Not kidding here, guys, mustard packets. It is everything, I mean, I, I don't even know, I could, I could start at the top and I could probably talk for ten minutes on, on shortages. Well, I do get that, so, okay, um, thank you, thank you for that update, and that's all the questions that I have, so I'm gonna go ahead and mute.
Yes, ma'am, thanks.
Anything else, Jay?
Nope, that'll do it, Bob, thank you all.
Okay, thanks, Jay, I did wanna mention that in, at that hearing, they also approved. And now I gotta find my place on the agenda here.
Yeah, what is it, Meadow?
The Walnut Creek Meadows.
The subdivision, thank you.
So they approved that as well. Okay, with that, let's see. Uh, Melissa, would you like to update us on, there's a couple of things here, but start with the Donnie Park area plan?
Sure, um, Commissioners, good evening, we had an open house last night out at Cromer Elementary School, um, two of our commissioners attended, and we had a really good turnout, I think the official count was a hundred and thirty people, but unofficially maybe closer to two hundred, um, I don't know if you've been to Cromer School, but they have a very large common room that worked really well for this event, and all the committee members were there. Uh, I would say that one hundred percent of the participants wore masks, so we felt that we were ready terms of pandemic safety. And um, you know, we, we got some good comments, I don't think we've had as of yet, an overwhelming number of comments on the the draft goals and the vision goals and policies that the committee's put together so far, but um you know, we'll, we'll wrap that up in a few days and, and get that back to you, so I feel that uh, well, depending on how the committee sees this, that we can start moving forward with really uh rounding out the plan and, and writing everything and putting it together, so thanks to everybody who helped last night, it was, I think, a, a good event, and people seem to be speaking of, you know, wanting to meet in person, people did seem to be um, really appreciative of the opportunity to get together. So that's that for um our Donnie Park update.
Okay, thanks, Melissa, yeah, Melissa did a great job on that, we did have a lot of people there. We had two supervisors there and a lot of good conversation. Uh, you wanna, you wanna go ahead and move forward and talk about the Bromfields grant?
Yeah, so nothing has really changed on that, that's something that um is still available, actually. Well, there is an open house tonight down at the, on Phoenix Avenue in the Napta um, building there, the um what will be the transfer center down there, and so there are still grant, uh, Brownfield grant money available, if anyone knows of any properties that may benefit from that. Um, and I guess I'll just jump right into the renewable energy ordinance update, then we um, are expecting to take that to the Board of Supervisors, just for a work session in November, possibly, we'll see how that schedule works out, but we'll have another advisory committee meeting, we had one last week that was uh, very interesting and a lot of good discussions, so we're continuing to work on some of the details with that, and we'll have another advisory committee meeting, um, I, not next week, but I believe it'll be the following week, we're still waiting for some people to respond to a meeting schedule poll. But that continues to be really well um attended, the meetings continue to be really well attended, and a lot of very important topics of discussion are, are coming up, so we're fortunate that we've had a test case with the the recent uh Babett Ranch Energy Center project, so that was very fortuitous that that was able to come in at this time, and we could could look at the, look at the project and think about the draft of the ordinance, so any questions on that?
Uh, yeah, Melissa, I'd like to comment, um y'all know that we passed Breck Babett Ranch's Energy Center last month. And what really inspires my comments is some things that are coming at us. I felt like last month, we kinda trusted Billy Cardasco, really. We were not as tough on that project as we were on Chevlon Butte. Chevlon Reef Project says that Arizona game and fish can intervene, it, it says very directly that game and fish can intervene and actually reduce um use of some towers if necessary, maybe that's in what we passed, I'm not sure, there's some references to US Fish and Wildlife and Arizona Game and Fish, it's a little unclear. Also, in uh in, in what we're, in what we're working on, on the committee, we have a lot of elements that try to uh retain the biological integrity of the land under a solar array. Uh, we definitely don't want people coming in scraping and using weed killer, and, and I think I'm you know, we, we talked about this last month, really. But in the conditions, we really didn't knuckle down and, and require these things. We got a little pushback from Nextera, you know, we, we lowered the fence down to the ground from six inches above, so little creatures could get in. And I think, you know, in my head, anyway, I'll speak for myself, I was just kinda trusting that Babett Ranches is gonna continue their really great environmental record, and, and make sure that this doesn't turn into a brown field. It looks like, and Melissa, you can update us on this, we've got one coming, it's like fourteen sections. Uh, Clenere or something like that, and, and it's uh, since uh Babett Ranches isn't gonna build until twenty-three, we're not gonna, we may not get a test case where we can uh, you know, figure out lessons learned. Um, you know, fourteen square miles of solar is a lot, and, and we wanna get it right, so I'm just, um, I guess I'm expressing my feelings as both a commission member and a member of the committee that's working on the the ordinance. We have uh, we're doing some research on other installations that uh have done a good job of retaining the biology, the plants under the uh under the unit, the solar units, and some of them are really beautiful, and they, they plant wildflowers, and uh, you know, they, they have beehives and they feed butterflies, so uh I'm just kinda rambling on, but I have a, a little discomfort about um, the lack of really tough conditions that we put in last month, I I don't have discomfort on Babett Ranches, but as a bigger picture, uh, maybe, since we possibly have fourteen square miles coming at us, I think we need to do some hard work and, and tighten things up, so that's uh, that's where I am on this, and uh we'll keep working on the, on the, the committee to uh get something to make sense. Thank you, Melissa.
You're welcome, thank you for that, Commissioner Best, and we really do appreciate your participation and, and Commissioner Ruggles' participation on that uh advisory group, so um, we are continuing to work on um this discussing and getting creative with how to address some of these, these bigger issues, and I, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that, that Canary project is proposed at seventeen sections, is that right?
Um, Melissa, it's actually kind of a moving target, they've, they've kinda gone back and forth, we, we had asked them because we hadn't seen a I'd planned in quite a while, and I, I told them, I said, when you come back in, before you come in, you know, we want to see what you're doing again, so we met with them a couple of weeks ago, I believe, and I think they were showing I, I can't remember exactly, but one of the things that we did see is that they reduced the size of their uh corridors quite a bit, that, that area is, is known for antelope. And I think Jessica Simmons may be here, but um, uh, Jessica is working with them, she's getting some information from uh AGFD, from the wildlife experts, the antelope experts in particular about this project, so we're looking at possibly expanding their corridors, just seeing what kind of feedback we get from those experts. And the other thing is they're, they're bringing their fencing all the way to the ground, all the way around, there's no six inch gap. Then there, we're not uh doing that with this particular case. Um, so that's a couple of things.
Yeah, this is Jessica Simmons, I just thought I'd interject real quick and say that uh I am working very hard uh, trying to communicate with Damon Fish about this project, so I will keep you guys updated. And um, they did say during the meeting two, three weeks ago that there would be seventeen sections, but then during the last renewable energy ordinance meeting, uh, they said fourteen, so I don't know if things have changed, or if they misspoke, we haven't cleared that up. And uh, Bob, I actually believe they are leaving a six or ten inch gap around all of their sections in the
Yeah, that's what I heard too.
Oh, no, that's what I meant, I'm sorry, yeah, I got that backwards, you know, they are leaving the gap, unlike Clenere, the last project.
You know, would that be one of the bigger uh solar arrays in the country? I mean, that's a huge solar array.
It's not fourteen contiguous sections, it would be in a checkerboard pattern.
But, but there would be fourteen to seventeen sections covered with solar.
Correct.
Yeah, that, because I know Topaz is a big one, I've been looking at that because it has some environmental features, and I think that was nine square miles, so thi- this is a very, very big uh array, yeah. Lot of work to do, thank you.
Uh, this, this is Chair Aunt Taveras, where is that solar array being proposed?
Madam Chair, it's uh, it's proposed, uh, actually due south and even covers part of the same, the same project that uh, the Breck project. So it's right south of there between, it's, it's north of the highway, so it's gonna cover some of the same parcels, so all that, that area we traveled through, you know, we did the site inspection up there. It's uh, it's right there in that area. It's, it's basically from a visual, well, what I've, what I've seen so far, it should not be visible uh, from their photo sims, so I am asking them for some additional photo sims, but uh, it shouldn't be visible along highway one eighty. I'll check and make sure about that, there was one interesting thing that happened, I asked them uh, you know, looking at the new, the REO, the, the Rio, I asked them to include some photo sims along the Arizona Trail. And uh, you know, because that's a visual resource, and they discovered that they didn't, they were not aware that the Arizona Trail went through their project, which is really kind of um, kind of an interesting thing, you know, uh so they're having to make some adjustments based on that as well, and pulling their solar panels, like, I think they were saying a minimum five hundred feet from the trail.
Okay, on, I I, of course, I'm not uh on the committee for um, the Rio, but I know that when we did um, the Babett Ranch, I did the site visit, um, and I was actually riding along with Ms. Simmons. And I was talking with her on, about the cumulative effect of these um, energy, the, the utility energy projects that are going in, and I'm, I'm thinking surely that is something that is being considered in this renewable energy ordinance, right? Like the cumulative effect, like we've got Perrin, we have Babett, now those have been approved. This would be a third in a relatively kind of close proximity. And I, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking, not to get into discussion about that, but I'm just thinking on, is there a cumulative effect study going on with the Rio? Basically, when is when when is one more too much in a in a in a specified area? Is there? Is there any dialogue going on in the Rio regarding that?
Chair Ontiveris, this is Melissa Shaw, and that is something that has come up in these past few discussions and there is not a current section in the draft that addresses that, but it is a topic that we we have been thinking about, particularly realizing, you know, with these projects coming in, their proximity to each other, and exactly what you just pointed out, that they are large projects that will be very close to each other and that there are very likely cumulative impacts. So with the way it's currently drafted and the the requirement for for studies, I think that there a request for looking at those as a whole would not be that much different than what we're asking for. It would just be a different way of looking at it. So but it is something that is on our agenda to have conversations with the advisory group about. Hope that answers your question.
Well, it kind of does. When you say that it, can you repeat what you said about you would look at the project individually, not as a whole, or you would look at it with with possibly accumulative effect? Because this this is a real thing.
Right.
Lost a wildlife corridor with Babbitt. I mean, just hypothetically, okay? So we lose a wildlife corridor there and they got to move somewhere else. Well, if they're if the next place they move, if if that territory is lost as well, then there it, listen, I'm not a wildlife biologist, that that that's not what I do, but just common sense would say that there's going to be some negative impacts when too much is just too much. And so that's what the question is. And I think that I've stated it pretty clearly is when is too much too much in a specific area? And I think that that's something that really, really needs to be looked at, especially knowing that we may have another one coming up.
Right. And that's a great question, and I don't think we know the answer to it. So that's something that I mean, Jessica or Bob, you can jump in in terms of a, you know, wildlife impact, but certainly the corridors are mapped and, you know, we will be looking at those as a whole for these with these large projects and but at what point it, yeah, enough becomes enough. That's something that we'll have to ask.
Yeah, well, where where does it tip? You know, there's a balance where, you know, clean green energy is good, but then there then then it's there's a balance where the scales tip and now the detriment outweighs the benefit. And that's what that's, I guess, what my concern is. And I would really, I'm just putting it out there that I'm I'm going to be looking at that. So I know Ms. Simmons, you and I had a lengthy conversation about that. It sounds like you're working with you know, very closely with Arizona Game and Fish. And I really, I'm going to be looking for answers for these going going forward. On the other, I've got another comment, and then I've got a question for you, Ms. Shaw, on on Commissioner Best's comments about on really nailing down some conditions on these energy projects. I know that we were all at the meeting. And so if it comes up in the Rio, one of the reasons, because I was pushing back and saying, listen, if we've got studies on that show that that we've got detriments to some of the wildlife, maybe we need to curtail something like that. And they, you know, curtail the the wind turbine. And the pushback from Next Terra was, well, if we do that, then we're going to have investor problems. And so we already know that that is an issue, and that might be something that the Rio needs to look at that at what point, what is the balance there as well? Because I I doubt that's going to be the last time we're going to get pushed back on that. And so so what where where do you where do you draw? Where do you dig in your heels and draw? And you know what I mean? And draw those lines and say, you know, I'm sorry about your investors, but we really need business here in Coconino County. And if it is going to injure the aviation, the wildlife, or anything else, we're going to curtail those turbines, and that's all there is to it. So you're going to have to make the choice. And that's what I'm wondering how, you know, kind of what are we going to be doing when that when these when these conversations come up again? On anyway, the other, the question that I was going to ask you on the Brownsville project or grant, is that on is that for actually remediation of one? Or is that just for the identification of it?
The current grant that we have my funds available for is for the analysis. In other words, the identification of those hazards. There are different funds available through ADQ that may help with remediation. The first step would always be to identify what the problem is and then remediate. So, yeah, so that's what the current grant provides funding for. And then, as I mentioned, the there there are potentially funds through ADQ to help with that remediation. It's a it's a different grant source, though.
Right. Okay, okay, gotcha. Okay, I think that that's all I've got on right now. The only other thing I guess I would like to remind everyone that's joining us tonight, if everyone could be sure to mute. So if everyone could just take a look, and if you don't see yourself muted, if you could do that, I see a nine two eight two two oh zero three zero six number that's not muted. Okay, thank you. And, okay, Commissioner Best has his hand raised. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and mute.
Just since we don't have much time, write down Conservation Land System, Pima County. Conservation Land System, Pima County. That is an effort in Pima County to address large scale environmental concerns that we've been talking about with the with the solar arrays and the wind farms, for that matter. I don't really have time to get into it too deeply, but basically you look at big picture. You look at what you have to conserve to keep plant and animal systems intact. And you start making big picture plans so that you don't lose things by mistake through a death of a thousand cuts. You know, you you keep approving small projects and you wake up in twenty years and realize, oh, my gosh, the antelope can't get through. So and it's it's actually a very inspiring story. It's fun to read because it worked.
Commissioner Best, what is the name of that again? Conservation Land?
Conservation Land System, Pima County. I think that will take you to the one that they did in Pima County and
Okay.
And we actually, we actually have that in the regional plan as something to do, but it's never been worked on because it's it's a huge project. Pima County did it because they had an endangered owl. Nobody could break ground on any project until they resolved the endangered owl issue. And so everybody got together. And so it's a good story. We're running out of time here, but it's it's worth looking at and it's it would be something that would be great to do in Coconino County, but it's it's a it's a tough, big project to pull off.
Okay, thank you for that, because I think that might help address some of the concerns that I have. So thank you for that, Commissioner Best. And we have, I'm going to be watching this really closely. We have a Michelle Donahue that just joined us. Ms. Donahue, if you would please mute, I would appreciate it.
And I just wanted to say really quick, I think this is relevant. I appreciate so much hearing you commissioners caring about cumulative impacts. And I believe Clenere is intending to submit not one cup CUP for all the sections at once, but many cups for, I don't know how many sections for each one, but we that will definitely have to have be a very important issue to think about the cumulative impacts, because each CUP application may be for only one or a small number.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Simmons. That's that's helpful as well. Okay, and Ms. Shaw, did you have anything else to add?
I think that was it on the updates for long range. Planning. Yeah, and I did. I did want to thank Commissioner Best for bringing up the Pima County Conservation Land System. And I believe in our comprehensive plan, it talks in there about one of the action items is to look into doing a project, something like an environmentally sensitive lands ordinance. So there was some specific thought about how that would look in Coconino County as well. We can research that further.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Shaw. And thank you, Commissioner Best, for bringing that up. On Commissioner Best, your hand is still raised. Is there anything else you wanted to add on that?
No, I am on the agenda as the last item, but I don't know that we have time, so.
Um, yeah, my clock is showing five twenty-nine. We have a minute. I I doubt we could adequately do that in a minute. On can we push the, can we put this on the next Commission Roundtable?
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Um, I don't think we're going to get a break tonight, guys. So in one minute, we're going to go ahead and start the meeting. Okay, on it is five thirty, and so I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. I'm going to start with the meeting rules and procedures. Welcome to the September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one on meeting of the Coconino County Planning and Zoning Commission. Cases will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. Following the staff presentation, the applicant and or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information, please feel free to keep your comments brief. Any relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I will make a call to the public. If you wish to address this case, please state your name and address. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes or less. Comments must be relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be polite and courteous. After all interests of public have spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussion will then take place amongst commissioners. No additional public comments may be made unless requested by a commissioner. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plot approval are referred to the Board of Supervisors as a recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have fifteen days to appeal. Please contact staff at the Community Development Office for appeal procedures. Due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call vote of the commissioners to ensure accuracy for the record. Please mute your speakers and turn off your camera. And I'm I'm actually, while I'm right there, I'm I'm going to be watching this very closely tonight to make sure everyone is muted. So thank everybody for doing that at this time. And thank you for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county plan. The first item on the agenda tonight is hold on a minute, my, for whatever reason, I apologize, my my pages are just kind of out of order. But the first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. So Mr. Short, if you could, please lead us in that. I'd appreciate it.
As I can. Thank you, Madam Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Short. The second item on the agenda is the approval of the August twenty fifth, twenty twenty-one minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Walters and a second by Commissioner Ruggles to approve. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Walters.
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles.
Aye.
Commissioner Burton.
Aye.
Commissioner Best.
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford.
Aye.
And this is Chair Ontiveris. I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. The third item tonight is the Consent Agenda, Case Number CUP one nine dash zero four one. Mr. Short, would you like to address the commission on this?
Adam Chair, yes, I I can. This is actually consent item. So unless the commission has any questions on this particular case, we'd like to pull it and discuss it. The commission can vote to approve it without discussion.
Okay, so we just need a motion and a second to approve this.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make the motion for this. I moved that we approve the extension of CUP nineteen dash zero four one as stated on the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Ruggles and a second by Commissioner Burton to approve case number CUP one nine dash zero four one. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Walters.
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles.
Aye.
Commissioner Burton.
Aye.
Commissioner Best.
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford.
Aye.
And Commissioner Ontiveris, I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. On, we're now going to move to the public hearings. And pursuant to Section Eight of this commission's bylaws concerning public hearing procedures, the chairperson may change the order that applicants are heard at the hearing. I'm going to move case number CUP two one dash zero five two to item number one on the public hearing agenda.
Madam Chair, this is Zach Schwartz with Planning and Zoning Staff, and I'm handling case CUP twenty-one zero five two. This is a request for a conditional use permit for a cottage industry and an equestrian facility on one point zero four acre parcel in the AR zone. That's agricultural residential. And the subject property is located at one two one one five North Peaks Parkway, and that's in Fernwood. Just to summarize what this request is tonight, the applicant has requested a continuance of the case in order to request a variance from the Board of Adjustment for setbacks related to animal keeping and specifically the equine use. Section three point three that handles animal keeping and agriculture states specifically that the Planning and Zoning Commission can't grant waivers to the setbacks. And so it's something that needs to be looked at by the Board of Adjustment. And so staff is recommending a continuance of this case to until the January fifth, twenty twenty-two hearing, which will give enough time for the applicants to go through the hearing process with the Board of Adjustment. And so with that, I'm happy to take any questions from the commission.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Do any of the commissioners have any questions? And if not, let's go ahead and move to a motion to continue to January fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Chair Ontiveris, I will make a motion for this case. I moved that CUP twenty-one dash zero five to be continued until the January fifth. That can't be. That can't be right.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yes, it is, I'm sorry, to the January fifth, uh, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Ruggles and a second by Commissioner Clifford to continue case number CUP twenty-one zero five two to the January fifth, two thousand twenty-two meeting um, of the Planning and Zoning Commission. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
This is Chair Aunt Taveras, and I also vote aye. The motion to continue passes unanimously. Um, the next case on the agenda I'm going to have to recuse myself from. So, um, Vice Chair Walters is going to call this case, and then I will rejoin everyone on the following item.
Madam Chair, before you leave, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Clifford.
If you reclude yourself, we will no longer have a quorum for voting.
You know what?
We will only have five commissioners, and we need six for voting.
You know what? Thank you, um, for that, Commissioner Clifford. Um, could I please ask counsel to, um, to give some direction here? Okay, so Mr. Lumpkin, could you, or Mr. Christelman?
Madam Chair, this uh, you know, abstain from the vote, we'd still have the, we'd still have a quorum.
Okay, so, um, all right, then I won't recuse myself, I will just abstain from the vote. So, in that case, um, I'll go ahead and call a case number ZC two one dash zero zero two.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I am making sure I'm sharing my screen. Can you see my screen all right?
Uh, yes, we can, Mr. Short.
Okay, good. Thank you, Madam Chair. This case is the Flagstaff Ranch Change of Zoning Regulations to Fire Mitigation Standards. In this case, the applicant is the, uh, the, excuse me, the property owners are the Flagstaff Ranch Golf Course LLC of Flagstaff, and also all property owners and then the Flagstaff Ranch Development. So it should be understood that everyone in this, in this development that is four hundred and eight acres, as you can see below, uh, are property owners. In this particular case, the applicant is Flagstaff Ranch Property Association of Flagstaff. The representative is Lindsay Shuby of Damage and Burnham from Phoenix. The zoning is planned residential zone and the property size is four hundred and eight acres, four hundred and eight point three-one acres. And this is, uh, the request seems a little complicated, so we we really need to kind of, uh, make it a little bit simpler if we can. I'll try to make it as simple as possible. The first part is remove condition, condition twenty-one of ordinance two thousand oh four, and that required the construction of a fire station and to modify these three conditions. And these three conditions would basically replace the original fire mitigation plan from two thousand two with a new fire mitigation plan from two thousand seventeen. And the reason there are three conditions here is, uh, one is for the zone change, one is for the subdivision for Flagstaff Ranch Golf Club, and one is for the Aspen Shadows subdivision. The Aspen Shadow subdivision is actually within this, this PRD development. So it's a little bit redundant, but that's the way it was done back then, and that's the way we'll address it now. So this is, uh, the subject properties, narrow photo showing them. This is Flagstaff Ranch, as you'll probably recognize, this entire development with, uh, it actually has many subdivisions, and it also has some, uh, believes in apartments. Uh, there's, there's a lot going on here. All of this was part of that PRD that was passed back in two thousand, and they're all part of this application. So I'll go back to some background on this. The original Flagstaff Ranch Development was, uh, approved in two thousand under ordinance two thousand four, and it would, it was a, a zone change to planned residential development. And like I said before, it included all of those four hundred and eight acres. Uh, there are two conditions there that we were concerned with. One is condition twenty-one, which required a fire station to be built if a fire district was formed. And condition twenty-two, which implemented a, a fire mitigation plan. Now, uh, fast forward to two thousand two, the fire mitigation plan was revised with a new ordinance uh, during that year. Actually, altogether, there were three ordinances, uh, two thousand two fourteen, two thousand two fifty-three, and two thousand two fifty-four that I described before. All of those did the same thing. They, they referred to the same fire mitigation plan that is in your packet. As you can see, it's a kind of a long document. It's thirty pages long, talks about a lot of stuff. Uh, it was designed to look at the, that area at that time, which was uh, kind of a new development. It was heavily forested. There were a lot of, of issues to address with that particular fire mitigation plan. So it addressed, uh, structural fire protection, fuels management, adequate water supply for fire suppression, roadways, and many other issues related to fire protection. Uh, with that two thousand two uh, ordinance, it also added the requirement that all building permits for structures and additions would be reviewed by the Flagstaff Ranch Fire District. So the proposal is basically to update the fire mitigation plan to replace the two thousand two fire mitigation plan with the two thousand seventeen fire mitigation plan. And if you look in your packet, that two thousand seventeen mitigation plan was in there. It is only three pages. So what this ultimately does is it removes uh, items from the two thousand two mitigation plan already implemented. There's a letter in your packet as well from the Highlands Fire Chief, and he indicates in there that these, uh, that all of this, most of this stuff in his plan was already implemented. Uh, it also removes the requirement for the fire district to review building permits. That is now being done by the Residential Design Review Committee, the DRC of Flagstaff Ranch. It also removes the requirement to build a fire station uh, because fire service is already provided by the Highlands Fire District. So what happened with the, in this particular case is they did create a fire district. It's called the Flagstaff Ranch Fire District. However, that district has, uh, contracted for fire services from the Highlands Fire District. So there's really no need for them to build a fire station there, and I believe uh, the fire chief said at the, at the study session last month that there's a fire station that has a response time of three and a half minutes. So there's a fire station really close. There's not really a need to build that a fire station. Uh, that what it does retain is fire protection, structural fire protection, fuels mitigation, and firewise standards. Those are all still in that two thousand seventeen mitigation plan. So whenever a building permit comes to them, or basically the development as a whole is required to meet these standards. And this, uh, these are the proposed changes to the conditions. So basically, that two thousand, uh, zero zero four ordinance has condition twenty-one that required a, a fire station if a fire district was created. And it had a lot of specific information about how that was to do, how that was to be done. And at this point, this is not really relevant, and the applicant would like this to be removed. So that would be removed completely. As for the other, uh, ordinance and two resolutions that are part of this, uh, most of that verbiage would be removed as well. The only thing that would be left is that it would simply say the fire, the Flagstaff Ranch Property Association Fire Mitigation Requirements dated May seventeen, two thousand seventeen shall be fully implemented. So it refers to that three-page document and replaces this other document with that document. And this would be done, um, you know, in, as, as we move forward to the board, this will be done through a resolution and an ordinance passed by the board. Now, if I did have a citizen participation neighborhood meeting, uh, through Zoom on June fifteenth, eleven people attended the meeting. That included the Flagstaff Ranch Property Owners Association Board. Uh, the applicant indicates there were no concerns expressed by any of the attendees at that meeting, and staff has not received any comments on this application as well. These are the findings for a zone change. I have addressed those in the staff report. And with that, staff recommends the commission forwards the recommendation of approval of ZC twenty-one zero zero two to the Board of Supervisors. And with that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Mr. Short, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. Why would there be a expiration date on this?
Uh, a next, I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, an expiration date?
Or, well, it says, gosh, I hope I'm, I'm looking at the right one. Um, isn't condition number four, doesn't it state that you shall be valid for a period of five years?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm not. I'm sorry. I do not know what happened with my, with my pages. They are really mixed up tonight. So, um, you're right, there is no, there is no, um, timeframe on this. So please forget I asked the question. Thanks, Mr. Short.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Are there any other questions?
Okay, I'm not seeing any, Mr. Short. So I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative is, um, available to address the commission.
Uh, Chair, my name is Lindsay Shuby, uh, with the law firm of Damage and Burnham. For your record, uh, forty north central here in Phoenix, Arizona. I am available to, to answer questions. I, I have a PowerPoint, but gosh, Bob did such a good job. I don't, you know, he hit every nail on the head. Um, we're here with a recommendation of, of support from, um, staff and support from the fire district. Uh, we are a firewise community. We intend to keep the high standards that we have. This is merely a cleanup item that we wanted to work on with your planning staff, and, and it's, it's been a pleasure working with them, and I, I can't do any better than Bob did. So, so with that, I stand for questions if you are, or any of the commission.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do any of the commissioners have any questions from this Shuby? Okay, not seeing any. I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public who wishes to address the commission on this case this evening. If so, please unmute or raise your hand, and I'll see you and call on you. And I'm not seeing anyone, so I'm gonna go ahead and, um, open it up to commission discussion. Uh, Commissioner Walters?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Um, I can make the findings for the recommended, well, the recommended recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Okay, okay, Commissioner Burton?
I can make sure, yeah, I can make the findings.
Okay, Commissioner Best?
I think the project, uh, makes sense, and I can make the findings.
Okay, Commissioner Clifford?
I can make the findings.
Okay, all right. With that, why don't we go ahead and move to a motion in a second, please?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve ZC dash two one dash zero zero two with the conditions as stated.
A second time.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Clifford and a second by Commissioner Walters um, to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors for ZC two one dash zero zero two. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
And this is Chair Aunt Taveras, and I abstain from the vote. Um, but the motion does pass, and, um, it will go to the Board of Supervisors as a recommendation, um, for approval. The next item on the agenda is case number CUP two one dash zero four six.
Thank you, Chair Aunt Taveras. I will just start presenting now.
Excuse me, Kelly, could you tell us what page that's on? Uh, I'm a little lost here.
Yes, give me.
I, I don't know if you, I don't know if you could, you have the same page as we do, but, uh, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
I will say, if any of the other staff happen to have that open at the moment, I do not. Uh, otherwise, I will look it up now.
Um, Commissioner Best, I, I've also, I've really got some mixed up stuff tonight, but if you would look, I think it's about page eighty-six to eighty-eight. About there.
And I apologize, Madam Chair, I don't have that up, and either we don't generally do that, but I, I can try to get there.
Page eighty-two.
Is it eighty-two? Okay, thank you, Commissioner Clifford. Okay, please go ahead, um, Ms. Bingham.
Thank you. This request is to use a RV as a permanent residence. Our property owner and applicant is Tim Chudup. He lives in Ashwork, Arizona. This parcel is two point set, two seven acres in the AR zone. And there's a one acre minimum in this zone. Here are some, uh, aerial photos for reference. Uh, you'll see that it's in the very far corner of Kaibada Estates West. If you can see where my cursor is, this road here is Double A Ranch Road. This property is several miles in, uh, over here in this corner by the National Forest and State Trust Land. Here's a more zoomed in picture on the left. You can see that it's, uh, pretty sparsely populated here. And on the next screen, you can see a close-up of, uh, the site plan and the parcel itself. Uh, when I was there a couple weeks ago, the driveway came in approximately here, a little closer to the property line than it's shown in the site plan, and it curves inward uh, to this patch of land here in between the trees. You can see here the view from the road. Um, so this is standing on Cedar Street. The fence that you're seeing on the right is the neighboring property, and the road comes in and curves towards the center of the property where the RV is located. And you can see some temporary siding was being installed. Um, this would be painted white if this was approved, uh, and uh, it would be updated later on, should this be approved. The unit is fully self-contained. Applicant proposes to haul and dump wastewater off-site, uh, so nothing would be installed on-site. Um, they plan to use solar, uh, and would get a building permit for that if this was approved. Uh, and as I mentioned before, uh, there are plans to install more permanent skirting uh, and potentially build a white fence around the RV unit, uh, should this be approved. And again, this is a relatively remote location in Kaibada Estates West. Uh, there's few single-family dwellings nearby. Uh, the only, uh, populated parcel, uh, is right next door, and it has a small cabin. Other adjacent properties are currently vacant. For the citizen participation, uh, the notification radius was three hundred feet, and seven addresses were noticed. Uh, no members of the public attended the public meeting. No comments were received by the applicant or by staff. Uh, and some analysis on this. And some analysis on this, RVs may be used as a residence in this zone so long as they get a conditional use permit for it, and that is approved by the commission. And the application is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and that it allows more housing options and more affordable housing options in Coconino County. Here are your findings of fact. And the proposed conditions on this application. Are there any questions from the commission?
Okay, Ms. Bingham, I'm not seeing any any hands raised or anyone unmuting, so I'm going to assume the commission has no questions for you. I'm I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to address the case. If so, please unmute. Is the applicant with us tonight? I believe so. Tim Chidick?
I saw him online earlier.
Yeah, he's still there. Tim, Mr. Chidick, could you please unmute and address the commission? Mr. Chidick, are you, are you able to hear me? Okay, well, I guess, Mr. Short, correct me if I'm wrong, but I guess the applicant is not required to address the commission. Am I correct on that?
Madam Chair, that is correct. They are not required to address the commission. It seems, he seems to be having trouble unmuting.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, with that, I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening? If so, please unmute or raise your hand. Okay, and I am not seeing any. All right, I'm going to reach out again to Mr. Chidick, the applicant. If you can hear me, would you please unmute? I was simply going to ask you to state your name and record for, or excuse me, your name and address for the record, and ask if you had read the staff report and agree with the conditions contained therein. But if you're not able to connect with this, I'm going to go ahead and move it to commission discussion. Commissioner Walters?
Aye. I apologize. I can make the findings.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles?
I also can make the findings for this C U P.
Okay, Commissioner Burton?
I can make the findings.
Okay, Commissioner Best?
Well, I'm happy that someone has come in with one of these. I know there are a lot of them out there, and I can make the findings.
Okay, Commissioner Clifford?
I can make the findings.
Okay, and Chair, this is Chair Aunt Taveris. I also can, and I also concur with Commissioner Best's comments. Mr. Chidick, if you can hear us, thank you for going through this procedure and doing this correctly. We very much appreciate it. With that, I will take a motion in a second, please.
I'll move that we approve C U P twenty-one zero four six as as written.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Burton and a second by Commissioner Ruggles to approve C U P two one dash zero four six. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
This is Chair Aunt Taveris. I also vote aye. C U P two one dash zero four six has been unanimously approved. The next item on the agenda is case number C U P two one dash zero five five.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This case is the Rainbow Girls Camp, C U P twenty-one zero five five. In this case, the property owner is the Arizona Rainbow Girls Foundation of Tucson, Arizona. The applicant is Deborah Raspberry of Tucson, Arizona. The zoning is general. Ten-acre minimum parcel size zone. The location is approximately two miles northeast of Stoneman Lake. The parcel size is thirty acres, and the request is a conditional use permit for a community service agency camp or a girls' camp. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property, CI seventeen, coming down here. There's a road back to Stoneman Lake, and this road goes up to this girls' camp right here, about halfway over to, this is Lake Mary Road. And this is an aerial photo showing the subject property. There's the road, you can see the road going by. This is a little cabin. It's a guest cabin, and then here is the development in the camp. As you can see, a lot of it is in a meadow. There's meadow through here and also forest and some other development nearby. This is a site plan showing the property. Again, this is the guest, I guess it's actually a caretaker's cabin right here. There's a road that goes all the way back here. It's quite a bit off the road. They have a kitchen, a sleeping area for the girls, and then this is a pavilion, an open pavilion, and then back here is a manufactured home. And over here is the facilities for the camp, the water and the propane, etc. And here's some pictures of the camp. This is from the road. You can see the camp sign. And this is a firing. They do have, they do have fires here, but they have them all in one place with everybody together. They don't have other fires, as far as I know, but they do have this one outside fire. And this is a picture showing the, I believe, this is the cooking area in the kitchen for the camp. You can see some other development back in the woods. And this, I just wanted to show you how the forest looks. The forest looks like it's been fanned in most parts. There are some thicker areas, but I believe this is looking off of the pavilion, looking north. There's some background on this case. This camp was actually first established nineteen seventy-eight with the C U P seventy-eight eleven. The camp has operated since that time. That's, I believe, that's about forty-two years, forty-three years without any issues, except in nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety, which is thirty years ago. They did have, they did complete an expansion without initial approvals. They didn't get building permits, but they did come in and rectify that eventually and get reapproved for the C U P. I asked the applicant this question, they, you know, what, how how often are you there? And she said about, they have one week-long camp held each year. They have about ten to fifteen girls and about six to eight adults at that camp. And they also have one additional one-day retreat each year. Unfortunately, there hasn't been a camp here since two thousand seventeen. There are two reasons for that. There they have a shortage of water out there, and also COVID, of course, shut that down for the last couple of years. Now, this, this C U P did expire. They did not ask for approval before the C U P expired. It was about a month late. So that means that it was not eligible for administrative renewal based on some commission discussion. Staff did see that there are a couple of things that probably aren't at this camp based on, you know, public safety requirements and the findings and other things. So I have added two, recommended two additional conditions. One of them is for weed mitigation, and the other one is the provision of fire and emergency service, and also a firewise and emergency response plan that would be approved by the fire chief. In the, in this case, I did provide some information to the commission, as I had a little discussion with the applicant about annexing into the fire district. The fire district has indicated that there would be a response time of about ten to eleven minutes. They also said there's a new cell tower nearby, which would make it easier to get in touch with the with the fire district, the fire station. That is not for sure always. As you know, when you're out in this, these types of areas, you cannot always get cell cell service. But staff did feel like that was important, that they did have the provision of this fire and emergency service, and we could discuss that more later if the commission has more questions on that. Staff does not recommend additional renewals for this C U P. If you look in the conditions, I indicated that the applicant would have a certain amount of time to meet those last two conditions. And if that did happen, then there would not be additional renewals required for the C U P. It's been here since nineteen seventy-eight. That seems like quite a long time. We can also discuss that if the commission has other ideas about that. The citizen participation plan and report was waived by the Community Development Director because, as I've said before, this has been here quite a while, and citizens, people in the area are very aware of it. These are the findings for conditional use permit. Staff, I have addressed those in the staff report. And with that, staff recommends approval of C U P twenty-one zero five five with the recommended conditions. And with that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
I have a question for you on the fire mitigation plan, Mr. Short. Did the applicant decide which way they wanted to go, whether they were willing to pay the Mormon Lake Fire District on a per-mile basis to respond or be annexed into the district? And I know, I remember I sent you some data that would show what their taxes would be for a year if they did that. And I think that's, it's kind of a worth noting that they are a five oh one C three nonprofit, so they do, they're exempt from paying property taxes. And that would be a considerable bump in any taxes they pay on that property if they were annexed into the district. The district is at the highest percentage, which is three dollars and twenty-five cents for a hundred dollars valuation. So I I believe it was somewhere over two thousand dollars would be the estimated taxes for calendar year twenty twenty-two for them.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles, the cost of such things is usually not something the commission would consider. In this case, if you look at condition number five, I basically left it open that they would need, that they would need to get fire service. So that could be, what I was looking at was more of a contract, either a contract for fire service from the fire district or annexation into the fire district. Annexation seemed like probably the best way to go, at least according to the fire chief, you know, and I appreciate you looking into that. But I did leave that open any way that they would like to get fire service, as long as they had some kind of sufficient fire service.
Essentially, I I am just curious about what they have decided on, because because of their nonprofit status, I realize it could be difficult if they were annexed, and if they have made a decision to do that, all well and good.
Commissioner Ruggles, I have not talked to the applicant about that. I think they're still considering their options, and they may have certainly something to say. They they did, you did see the email that the applicant sent to my disclosure that with the commission, and also my response, you know, basically taking information from the fire chief. The fire chief did indicate that if if there was a fire here, and they did respond to a fire here, and they didn't have fire service, or they weren't annexed to the district, the applicant, you know, then, you know, the applicant would be able to refuse service, to say, no, you can't put out the fire. And then the, then the fire district, the fire department, the trucks would have to kind of surround the property, make sure the fire didn't go out into the forest. And he indicated if they did allow them to put out the fire, then they would incur quite a large cost for that. So there's, you know, a couple of things to think about here.
Well, I will be very pleased to let the applicant address how they wish to do that. I I have no desire to direct them how to do that, other than what you have put in the conditions. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles.
Mr. Short, I've got a few questions. In regard to not requiring a renewal, and I, and I can see both sides of that issue. I was out at the property. As I, I told you, I'd go out and take a look at weeds. Didn't find any to speak of. There's a few mullen plants on the property, but actually, it's in very good shape. But it is an older property, and we do have kids on the property, and so health and safety is, in my mind, the paramount value here. Would there be any checking up on things like sanitary facilities and building safety if we don't have a renewal?
Commissioner Best, my understanding, and this is from the previous staff report, is that as a camp, you know, as a public camp for girls, that they are required to, you know, meet certain requirements in terms of wastewater, water, you know, other, other things. They are, they are required to keep up with those kinds of things. They, you know, does require license beyond what the county has. I don't know what the details of that, the applicant may be able to to inform us more about that.
Okay, we will ask the applicant. Thank you very much.
Okay, are there any other questions from the, from the commissioners for Mr. Short? Okay, Mr. Ruggles, you're still unmuted. Do you have anything further?
Okay, at this point, no, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, then I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would please address the commission this evening?
I, yes, Madam Chair, this is Deborah Raspberry. I'm the representative of the Arizona Rainbow Girls Foundation.
Miss Raspberry, let me, let me interrupt you for just a minute. Would you please state your address for the record? And I would also like to ask you if you have read the staff report and if you agree with the conditions. And so go ahead, state your address, and then
My address is one five
Address that and go ahead with your comments.
Okay, my address is one five four zero West Oracle Ranch Road in Oracle, Arizona, so I am down south by Tucson.
Okay, and have you read, have you read the staff report, and do you agree with the conditions?
Yes, ma'am, I have read the staff report, and the only issues about the conditions is, you know, the the fire part, because with us being a five oh one C three organization, we don't have deep pockets. So we're, we have not had a a board meeting, a foundation board meeting yet. I wanted to wait till after this hearing, and then we, I will take everything to the board, and we will, we will discuss it, and we can get back with with, you know, on this.
Okay, so you heard the comments by Commissioner Best, or, yeah, Best and Commissioner Ruggles regarding some concerns. It sounds like you're still in the, kind of the phase of figuring out exactly how you want to go with the, with the fire protection, if that's correct.
That is correct, and that's because of finances.
Okay, okay, and you do see, though, in condition number five, that Okay, okay. And you do see though in condition number five, that you do have some options on the way, the way Mr. Short has written this condition, uh, you do have some options before you. So I, I'm pretty sure you see that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Do you have any further comments that you would like to make?
Um, I just, I would just like to, um, uh, address the, uh, the sanitation issue um, in the, uh, the, the building that, um, our girls stay in. Um, that is, uh, up to, uh, health codes. And be, when we do go up, uh, and use the main cabin, which is where the kitchen is, we go in and we completely totally clean sanitize prior to any girls ever showing up. And it's adults that do the cleaning.
Okay. All right, do you have anything further? And I'm gonna ask if the the commissioners have any questions for you? Okay, so commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. Raspberry this evening? Alrighty, I'm seeing none. I'm going to ask if there's any in the public that would like to address the commission on this case this evening. If so, would you please unmute or raise your hand? And I'm not seeing any, so I'm gonna go ahead and close it to the public, open it at commission, um, discussion level. Commissioner Walters?
I can make the findings, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles?
I also can make the findings.
Um, Commissioner Ruggles, I, I didn't hear you. Are you there?
Yes, I am. Let's try this again. Uh, I can also make the findings.
Mr. Short, can you hear Commissioner Ruggles?
That's, I'm gonna try this again. I think I had a little technical problem here. Can you hear me now?
John, I don't think she can hear us.
Yeah, I think that.
Yeah, John, I hear you.
Okay. Okay, can, can you hear me, Commissioner Walters?
I can hear you now.
Okay. I'm gonna try this again.
I think.
I'm not sure what is going on.
Okay, can anyone hear me? I'm thinking, I'm thinking that I got lost again.
I can hear you, I'm sure.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, uh, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go ahead and leave the meeting. Again, like I did before, I don't know what else to do and I'll sign right back on and let's hope that corrects it.
Okay, meanwhile, this is Vice Chair Walters. I'll stand until she comes back. We'll give her just a minute here, please.
Also, the brother is really nasty on our side of town, so she may be getting some weather interference at her house.
Um, that may be what is happening, but light connection also.
Yeah, I, I had that problem earlier when we started.
Yeah, she said she was getting hail at her house a little while ago.
Okay, I heard from Commissioner Ruggles, Commissioner Best.
Um, yeah, I, I still have, uh, some questions about, uh, long-term infrastructure issues. Um, but basically I can make the findings and, uh, Ms. Raspberry, if you can contact me through Bob Short. If you'd like to meet on the property sometime, I can show you a weed or two that you might wanna pull. And, uh, you could do it either this year or uh, usually the invasive weeds show themselves before the native plants. So June first is a, is a good time, uh, if somebody happens to be up there. But, uh, when I went out there, I did not see a major weed problem. And, uh, I can make the findings.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Burton?
Yeah, I can make the findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Clifford?
I can make the findings.
Okay, so let's, um, give, give, uh, Commissioner or Chair Aunt Abera just a moment. Chair Aunt Aberas, can you hear us? We cannot hear you.
Madam Chair, are you able to hear us?
Um, okay, I can hear you. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, I don't know what's going on. There's a tremendous storm at my house right now. I don't know if it's storm related or not, but I'm gonna go ahead and pick up where we were. Um, Commissioner Ruggles, um, we were in commission discussion or-
Chair Aunt Aberas, um, if I can interject, I went through and got everybody's, uh, we're looking for a motion now at this point.
Got it. Okay, okay. So let's go ahead and take a motion. Thank you, can, thank you, Vice Chair.
Are you what? If ever, anyone or everyone can hear me, I, I will make a motion on this. Um, I move for approval of CUP twenty-one dash zero five-five with the conditions as stated by staff.
A second then.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Ruggles and a second by Commissioner Walters. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Walters?
I am.
Commissioner Ruggles?
I.
Commissioner Burton?
I.
Commissioner Best?
I.
Commissioner Clifford?
I.
And this is Chair Aunt Aberas. I also vote aye. CUP two-one dash zero five-five passes unanimously. And the last case on the public hearings is-
Commissioner Aunt Aberas? I think you're muted.
Mr. Walters, I believe she has, she has, I, I see her on there twice. One's muted, one is not.
I see that.
She's having some trouble again.
Okay, would you go ahead and present the case while she works on this? Is this, is this your case?
Now, this is Kelly's case. Then she is presenting right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commission. I'll go ahead and start presenting. Uh, CUP twenty-one dash zero five-six, uh, is a case for a cottage industry for water transport. And just so the commission is aware, this case is, uh, there are two uses that need conditional use permits here. One is the storage of a commercial vehicle and one is the cottage industry itself. The property owners and applicants for this case are Julie and Brian Loughler. Their, uh, property size is one point zero seven acres. They're located in the AR zone. Uh, and once again, their request is for a cottage industry and for a commercial vehicle storage on their property. Uh, to orient you here, uh, in the bottom right of your screen, you'll see that double A Ranch Road is coming up here. This is relatively close to Ash Fork, uh, just a couple of miles up double A Ranch Road. Uh, and you'll see that Canyon Road comes along the south of their property. And this is a county maintained road. Here we have a zoomed in aerial photo of their property. Uh, if you can see my cursor, the truck will be coming in from Canyon Road. And it pulls around the house through the back and the commercial vehicle will be stored right around here along the back of the property between the home and the water tower or water tank, my, excuse me. Um, and when it leaves in the morning, it will just complete the circle and pull back out onto Canyon Road. You'll see in the site plan that the home and office, uh, are located here. And they're, uh, a single family dwelling. And here are some photos of the site. This is their commercial vehicle. You can see the water tank on the back. Uh, this vehicle, uh, is necessary because it's much better suited for some of the tough roads in Kibab Estates West where they'll be delivering water. And it can hold a lot of water as well. Uh, you can see in the photo on the left that the vehicle is minimally visible from Canyon Road. Uh, perhaps if you were farther down the road, you would see a little bit more of the truck. Uh, but as the commission can see, it is, uh, not too close to the property lines and relatively hidden. Uh, so in summary, the applicants would be using their commercial vehicle to haul water throughout Kibab Estates West. Uh, they would fill up at a commercial well in Ash Fork and then drive back out, uh, to their neighbors who need the water. Customers would not be needing to visit the property. Hours of operation would be Monday to Friday, nine to five P M. And then on Saturdays from nine to twelve P M. They would be closed on holidays and closed on Sundays. The office would be located in their home in a twelve by twelve bedroom, which fulfills the, uh, zoning ordinance requirements that less than fifty percent of the property is dedicated uh, to the conditional use cottage industry. There would be no employees necessary other than the applicants themselves. And again, Canyon Road is county maintained. For their citizen participation, twenty addresses were noticed. The radius was three hundred feet, but a few additional addresses were noticed beyond that. The public meeting was held on July twenty-fourth. Uh, no one from the public attended, uh, although two responses were received with no concerns by the applicant. Uh, staff did not receive any comments. To analyze this case, uh, Cottage Industries are allowed in the AR zone with the approval of this conditional use permit. Commercial vehicle storage is also allowed in the AR zone. Uh, there is an approved conditional use permit. The application is consistent with the policies of comprehensive plan. Cottage Industries are generally supported by the comprehensive plan. And here are your findings of fact. Uh, staff has analyzed these in your report. And here are the proposed conditions. Staff is recommending approval for CUP dash twenty-one dash zero five-six. And are there any questions from the commission?
Seeing none. Uh, Chair Aunt Aberas, are you back?
You know, I think I am. Do you guys hear me?
We do. You're on.
Okay, so, so I am back. Okay, I'm not seeing any questions for, on Ms. Bingham. So I'm gonna ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative is present this evening?
Yes, uh, hi, this is Julie Loughler.
Okay, would you please state your, um, address for the record? And I would like to ask you if you have read the staff report and if you agree with the conditions in it.
My address is twenty-two twenty-six North Anne Lane in Ash Fork, uh, eight six three two zero. And yes, I agree with the conditions.
Okay, thank you. Um, do you have any other comments you'd like to add?
Uh, we did receive a couple more, uh, emails after our, uh, citizens' participation plan meeting. And they were all in favor of our business opening.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Loughler. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Ms. Loughler at this time? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission this evening on this case. If so, oh, please unmute or raise your hand and I'll call on you. Okay, not seeing any. I'm gonna go ahead and close it to the, close the public portion and open it up at, uh, commission level. Commissioner Walters?
I can make the findings, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles?
I can make the findings.
Okay, Commissioner Burton?
I can make the findings.
Uh, Commissioner Best?
I can make the findings.
Commissioner Clifford?
I can make the findings.
Okay, and this is Chair Aunt Aberas. I also can make the findings. Uh, so let's go ahead and move to a motion in a second, please.
Make a motion for approval of CUP dash twenty-one dash zero five-six.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Walters and a second by Commissioner Clifford for approval of CUP twenty-one dash zero five-six. All those in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Walters?
I am.
Commissioner Ruggles?
I.
Commissioner Burton?
I.
Commissioner Best?
Hi.
Commissioner Clifford?
I.
And this is Chair Aunt Aberas. I also vote aye. CUP twenty-one zero five-six is approved unanimously. And the last item on the agenda this evening is a call to the public for items not on the agenda. Is anyone out there that would like to address the commission for items not on the agenda? Okay, and not seeing any one, any. Um, before I adjourn, uh, Mr. Short, I would like to ask that you, uh, will put on Mr. Commissioner Best's request, uh, that was supposed to be on commission round table this evening. If you would also, if you would get that on the agenda for next month's meeting, please.
Madam Chair, yes, I, I will do that.
Okay, and, um, thank you, everyone, for helping me this evening. This has been a pretty rough go on my end. I'm not kidding. So thank you, everyone, for all your, all your help. And with that, uh, my clock shows six thirty-five P M. And the meeting is adjourned. So I'll see all you guys next month.
Thank you all. Have a great month.
Thank you, madam.
Good night, everybody. Thanks, everyone. We'll see you next month.
Take care. I'll be healthy out there.